Okay, please rise and pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Um, I'd like to welcome all the visitors and media reps. And do we have any constituent communications? No? Okay. Uh, we need to approve the agenda.
So, is that it?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Passes. Now we need to, approval of the meeting minutes. We have, let's see, we have two. And this is the one. Two. I move that we approve the minutes.
Say.
Need to spend. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Passes. Now we're on to the approval of accounts payable. Motion?
Second.
Second. Alright, let's just. Um, I know we have a financial committee, so I'm gonna turn to you and I'll help you.
Um, Kerry and I were there on Friday. We had several questions, had good, good discussions, and all the questions were answered. Everything appears to be like we want it, even better than what we were thinking.
Does anybody have any other question?
I had a question and I didn't answer it.
Alright. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now on to the monthly financials. Again, finance committee.
Same thing, uh, we went over everything, so, nothing to report.
Okay. Any other question?
Fine tooth, go.
Yeah.
Yes. I didn't bring it tonight or I'd show you.
All in favor say aye.
We need a motion first, sorry.
Sir moved.
Sorry. That's okay.
Now we have one. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Passes. Alright, on to recognition, my favorite part. Dave, will you stand up and tell us about your wonderful reputation?
About what?
Tell us all about the, um, IHSSA and...
Hall of Fame?
Yeah.
Um, I was lucky to be selected this year, uh, since, well, I think it started in nineteen seventy-six and, uh, there were six, I was the sixty-first. Uh, I was inducted with, my friend was Hanson who's at Grinnell High School. And it was a great night. It's really kind of, I mean, it's, it's an honor, but I didn't really realize that there are only about thirty-five of us who are left alive. Uh, the others are dead. And so it's kind of interesting, uh, well, it's the truth. I tend to be pretty honest, you know? But they, when it started in nineteen seventy-six, they selected one coach a year. And then in like two thousand two, like start, they started in, inducting two because it was, they wanted to get more people because it was so selective. It was a little ridiculous. But it's pretty cool when you think of all the thousands of coaches.
And how do you get nominated?
Um, you really don't know, the, the committee is secret. And I still don't know who's on the committee, but, uh, they meet and you can be nominated. And I know I was nominated at least twice. And then people on the committee knew me. Uh, and it was, it was, um, I mean, I've held a lot of offices within IHSSA. We've hosted quite a bit. I, I've been on committee, I'm on, still on the all-state committee. I had my four years and then they asked me to come back as the special assistant. Each one of the all-states has a special assistant on the individual events. And then they also knew that I work with, um, future, uh, communication educators at the University of Iowa. I've taught up there for twenty years and, um, so that's a concern because you and I now is the only program in the state that puts out communication educators. And I was just at NCA, um, last week in Philadelphia. And Illinois State, who was one of the largest in the United States, has cut into our program. So we're not exactly sure where speech teachers are going to come from because with the standards changing, uh, we're doing a lot of work. We had standards, I was on the standards committee for NCA, for college board, for speaking, listening, and media. And with the change, we've got to review those standards. Uh, many English teachers are teaching speech and that was one thing that was pretty cool. At Keokuk, when I came, we had Jane at the middle school, Barb, Laura Wolf, and, and like me, was there one other certified speech person? But for a school our size, we had an amazing amount of speech certified people. And now Jane's retired, I'm retired, Laura was superintendent, she's teaching somewhere else, and Barb's now the tag. So, you know, it's kind of interesting how the ebb and flow of things. But, but it was, it was really very nice evening. It's kind of one of those things, it's nice while you're still alive because people say nice things about you.
Well, and it's quite, quite a coup for us too, as a district.
It was pretty cool.
I can't, I want to say something about my colleague, former colleague, Dave. First of all, even though he's retired, you're still teaching some, uh, college grade speech classes. So fortunately, we still have your expertise and that's wonderful. Secondly, in addition to all that you've done in the school district, you have been so involved in our community, for instance, great year of players. As a board member, a president, a director, I had the great honor and fun to be in Tony and Tina's wedding many years ago that Dave directed. And you keep promising you were gonna...
You can't get the rights anymore.
Oh, okay.
That's why. We were done, we were done doing it again, but we can't get the rights.
You are a wonderful resource, uh, for our community, all that you, and then there's many other things I see you naming. You're involved with KIR, aren't you? In the community and so, uh...
The Keokuk Concert Association, and he calls the volleyball games and...
Yeah, the announcer. So, in addition to, th- this honor is well deserved, but I also would take this off the table on behalf of the board of the community to thank you, Dave, for all that you've done over the years. But I hope you continue to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Dave, are you now, as a recipient of that honor, do you get on the board to review future recipients? That's secret.
It's secret. I don't know.
The sixty-first winner...
Go and get recognized. They are afraid of the, of the, uh, all-state...
Living. Yeah, one sure. That's funny. The oldest one there was ninety. Uh, he's from Storm Lake and he walks about like the, you know, he's, he's walking at ninety, that's pretty good. But, so they kind of walked around it, but yeah, we, uh, every year that I go to the convention and I present every year to the experienced coaches. So, I get to wave and wear my medal and all that stuff. You know, so we'll see how long I make it.
We're gonna get you something, we don't have it now, but we're going to get you something.
Cool, thanks.
Alright, now on to the PBIS, K-Pride. And I, I'm the one that wanted this on here because we went to the Main Street meeting and the southeast regional developers have been working with the town of Keokuk. And they have taken K-Pride and labeled it, which is, I believe, what your intent was in twenty-twelve, to have that happen. So it's happened. So I'd like Jessica Kim and Sheri to stand because they were on the original, they're the only people still in the district who were on that original committee. And, um, the reason Jody's here is because Jody and Jessica both wrote grants this year and they got, I think, each twenty-five hundred dollars for their PBIS team and that's awesome. But I'd like you to tell us a little bit about the origination of it and, gosh, K-Pride.
We were kind of chosen when we were doing, I think we were chosen however many years ago.
Back when Mr. Frakes was here, he kind of, well, he kind of asked if anyone was interested and I honestly didn't know what I was getting into. I will be completely honest, I thought I was gonna get some credit so I could renew my license. Cause I was like, you know, I don't know if I want to get on anything else, I don't know if I want to do anything else. And Kim's like, she came to me and she's like, you know, you can use this to renew your license. I said, okay, sign me up. So that's kind of how it, we, then we ended up going to, um, we worked with the ADA and we went up to Burlington. Yeah, we've been to a conference in Chicago. We, um, started in Burlington though. I mean, it was all just kind of a, a meeting where they guide you and you kind of brainstorm as a group and, so that's kind of where K-Pride...
We saw a need in the school too, I mean, there was a need in the school at the time to really focus on what was going well in our schools. And I think that was the biggest thing I was impressed by and in my twenty-five years of teaching, I've been on a lot of different things. And I just felt like this was something that we should put our energies into because it really focused on the people that are doing what's supposed to be done, when it needs to be done. And you always feel like we don't recognize that. So I think that's been the most positive thing that I think our group has done is we really recognize people that, the kids that are doing what's, what's supposed to be done or, you know, or have gone a little bit of a...
Who came up with the phrase K-Pride?
We did, and we... I can actually, I can remember exactly what we came with.
Yeah, we, I mean, we had several days in Burlington where we, you know, would brainstorm and...
Jill Lake was there, right? Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, Jill Lake was there. I know, and I'm gonna tell on Jessica because I asked her about this and she said, come to my room, I'm OCD. And she had a three-ring folder and she had the original T-shirt and how it had been designed and all of that, so that's kind of cool.
Kind of hoard some things, but not everything. But, so yeah, I'm, I had all the files and I got to see kind of where we started. It's kind of neat to look back at it and think, gosh, that's how it started and now look where we are. And I will say, I, once again, I didn't know what I was getting myself into when I signed up to do it, but I'm glad I did it because I like that kind of stuff, so.
Then we've added to it, we added K-term last year and we have the K-Pride campaign and we added that and there are more. So we tried to create a sense of community and then reminding the kids what the three Rs are throughout the year and continue to teach it. I think that's, we kind of tried to grow on it over the year.
So, and I think we, our whole intent, like you said, was to see it spread. So, yeah, it started the high school and, you know, now the other schools have taken it on and now the community's taking it on. That's awesome.
The K-Pride logo, I remember, it didn't start out as that, and it was Martha Knapp who designed that. She was the one who said, can we, can we do something with that? And I remember right outside your room, we chose, we decided on the coloring, I think the girl gave us two cents about the purple because you have, anybody that happened to be standing there. And that's where Martha Knapp was the one, you know, was responsible for that design.
Sorry, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Of course. And Joey, stand out, thank you.
Oh.
For writing the grant because, you know, all the branding you're doing and using of it, it's nice that you're bringing that money in and...
I think it's great that, that, you know, they're recognizing us and what we're doing and trying to support it, so I think that's great.
And where did that come from?
Lee County. Lee County youth.
Yeah.
Southeasterns.
So, it was all...
And Jody, aren't you writing another grant also with, for your backpack program?
Um, so we did, yeah, and, um...
Did you, have you heard yet?
Quinn actually wrote one to Walmart and they did, um, give her some money to buy a backpack, which is great. And then I kind of piggybacked and then also wrote one to Walmart for the PBIS, we haven't heard back, so, yeah. So, it's just nice to have those opportunities out there because really to offer all those incentives and do all those activities with the students that they really enjoy and what kind of feeds their willingness to participate, you know, follow what the guidelines that we want. You know, it's nice to be able to have that available, those unavailable...
Thank you for doing that, thank Quinn also, please.
Thank you very much. We have something for you too, we'll hear it to you later. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Alright, now we're on to announcements. George Washington and Torrance and Nicole said she might not be here and she sent us an email.
I, I printed it off, I don't know if you want to read it or just... Yeah, she just talked about their, okay, at Torrance, they're building an outdoor music play center. Uh, they're looking for community partners to sponsor some PBIS here. They're having a Charlie Brown Thanksgiving feast on the twenty-second and a Christmas program on the twentieth. George Washington, artists in the schools, uh, they went to the Veterans Day assembly and enjoyed it. Finished their first trimester. They've had two successful PTO fundraisers, one was just last...
Saturday, yep.
How much money did you make?
Twenty-five hundred. Thanks for coming, keep it, thank you, thanks.
And then she reported on, uh, the GW goals and they want to have an eighties party, so they're trying to get all their, um, points up to eighty percent proficient in reading and math. And right now, fourth grade is at seventy-one in reading, seventy-eight in math, and eighty-one in science, seventy, and the fifth grade is at seventy-seven in reading, seventy-four in math, and seventy-four in science. So that's something they're looking forward to. And then she talked about maps.
Alright, Hawthorne.
Alright, you want to come up? Sure.
Sure.
Alright. Pretty slow month. A couple of things though, on Friday, we had our first trimester, um, awards assembly. Um, recognized all of our students for academic awards and then also for our PBIS, um, K-Pride awards. Recognized all of our chief change champs for the, for the first trimester so far. Um, that was very well attended, I thought we had a great parent turnout. Um, and as you know, from last year, we've been pulling the whole school into that, into that gym. So it's, it's fun to get the whole, whole school together, all the parents in there, um, it's a packed house, so, uh, that was Friday. Um, fast, the fast window closed, um, October thirty-first, um, so take a look at our scores. Uh, one of our building goals was to increase, uh, percentage of students proficient, um, fall winter and spring by five percent each, each testing window. Um, and so from last year to this year, uh, each of our grade levels made that growth, uh, all except for one. And then if you look for, uh, as I'm looking across, you know, our kindergartners from last year, going out, first graders this year made a three percent proficiency growth. First graders to second graders this year made a twelve percent proficiency growth. And then second grade and third graders this year made a five percent proficiency growth. So we're, we're pretty pleased with those numbers, um, to see that those kids are gaining, we are getting some more kids on board and getting them, getting them in the right direction. We, uh, in coming weeks are gonna be looking into, uh, during our PLC meetings, we're gonna be looking into, um, beefing up some of our foundational pieces with our PLCs. We did a culture survey two Wednesdays ago, um, just to look at, uh, just to take a realistic look at where our building was at with our PLCs. Um, and we're gonna be sharing that information out with, with our teams and with our staff members so they can have that, um, conversation during their future PLC conversations. So we want to build up some of those, um, some of those skills, make sure that those conversations that we're having during that time are, are productive, um, and are honest. So we can really start to hone in on where our students are, what they need, and continue to see growth from them there. And then the last item, save the date, uh, our music program, our Christmas music program will be on December ninth. So, um, so we're gonna invite a Hawthorne, um, on that day.
Are you having them all on one day?
Yeah, different grades, different times, I'm sorry.
All on one day or does that take a couple of days?
They got first grade at nine-twenty. Second grade is at one-ten. Third grade at two. Kindergartners, sorry, the kindergartners are broken up. Uh, three of the grade levels will be going on Friday at ten-ten. And the other four will be going at ten-ten on Thursday. Majority of the school will be on the ninth.
Thank you.
And this year at Hawthorne, we are collecting the tier program through the state of Iowa. And we're doing progress monitoring of nine students right now who have had some challenges at the beginning of the year with some behavior. We are very happy to see that from last month, we went from forty-one percent to sixty-six percent this month where we're having our students meet their daily goal of success in the classroom. Um, we are looking at to get a few more kids on board just to make sure we can, uh, have better successes both in the classroom and outside of the classroom, making good choices with our PBIS program.
Have you received your information yet out of summer school? How it...
The results from last summer.
I have not.
Jerry?
I have not received them. I'm making a note to email them and ask them about that because I have not received anything from them.
What's a PLC name?
Our professional learning communities. So like our grade level teams that get all together as, as teachers and they'll, they'll converse about what they're seeing in their classrooms, um, what strategies they're using to teach. Ideally, that's how it should be operating and we're trying to build up some of those foundational skills with those, um, so they can have more productive conversations in there. And that doesn't necessarily have to be grade levels, that could be specialty areas and whatnot, so.
Good question.
When they first started, I know there was one in there.
Maybe it's time to have something, yeah. People forgot it. We, we use those, uh, that was so awesome. And some of it's still what it is, but, uh, a good question.
Yeah, I ask you.
We need to, uh, get some articles.
Thanks guys.
Do we have any more, Brett?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The school?
They must... Are they both officiating tonight or...
Uh, I know one is.
Notice how they just rise up together and like standing like...
I got a few things here. Uh, first off, um, a good PLC update as well, uh, what we're currently looking at is our course descriptions as a whole. Uh, so, uh, re-up, updating our course catalog. Uh, we've done some ventures looking around the state at different course catalogs and we really want to, uh, make sure that, uh, we are getting the correct pathways for our students coming into the high school. Uh, so we're looking at all our course descriptions, um, our science pathways, um, industrial tech, all different pathways that we can provide for students. And our hope is that we can create a catalog at some point by next year, um, that lays out every unit that a student will get in every course. And then also online, they can see eventually the standards that will be any, within each unit. Uh, so it's all laid out for parents. Uh, so bear with us, it's gonna be a long project, but that's, that's some of our PLC work right now is really looking at our course descriptions, which ties right into identifying our standards and, and the standard-based grading. So that's a lot of what our PLC is doing. Again, we got a lot of different course descriptions we're looking at, like is it Fort Madison, a few of theirs, see what they're doing. Uh, a quick shout out to, uh, the cast, crew, director, I went to Dracula and Dixie, um, on Saturday, it was a wonderful play, but owned by our kids. Um, they just did an amazing job. So that was really good. Allstate, we had seven kids, uh, make all-state for choir, Tommy Allen, uh, Corbin Ball, Dre Moody, Josh Pollitt, Beth Congdon, Stephanie Miller, and Dalton Olivesky. Uh, so they all made all-state and then we had, uh, I believe, six freshmen make Opus Honor, Tinder Hunt, Brandon Cabanall, Jordan Means, Cameron Mustin, Logan Roach, and Jetta Tender. Our all-state, it was the highest individual honor available to, um, Iowa high school musicians, so we were very proud of all those students. Um, we also had some Little Feathers make all-state, um, McKenna Takis, Kendall Watson, Kerrigan Eklund, and Brooklyn Washburn. Um, tomorrow at the high school, we'll be having a blood drive, so if you want to come, uh, yeah, don't be grabbing your arms when we get some blood tomorrow. We'll have a blood drive and even though you didn't sign up early, we'll still take you there.
He wants to know if he can make that a fundraiser.
Also, near and dear to my heart, uh, we played Q and D to open up. Keokuk does tomorrow night, so we're gonna hopefully pack the house.
What colors you'll be wearing?
Uh, I'll be wearing purple.
Thank you, alright.
Especially, uh, Coach Cannell if he gets too mountainous on that night.
Throw him out, right? After you do that.
I love Coach. But no, it should be fun, it should be fun for everybody and I know it's, it's always an awesome environment with Q and D's here. Um, it'll be a great game, they always have both good, good teams. It'll be three dollars, pack the house for any students that don't have a student pass, so we're, we're bringing the price down, um, just trying to get more kids there. And we're also torn with the fact of, um, you know, conference games are set at five dollars for students, but non-conference games are not. Um, so we're looking for non-conference games to be three dollars across the board for our students, um, to get more students in games. Six o'clock.
Six, because varsity is about seven-thirty?
Uh, no, because it's gonna only be at half. So they're only playing at half for JB, so thank you for reminding me of that. And Little Feathers are gonna perform at five-fifty-five. So if you call at five-fifty-five, Little Feathers are gonna perform, uh, they're gonna play two quarters, JB, and then there will be another Little Feathers performance before the varsity game. Uh, so it should be a really fun night and, uh, I'll get on the mic from the lawn, hopefully get the kids excited, that's three bucks and get them there and, you know, knock off Q and D a little bit. First boys varsity game is at home, it's December ninth against Mount Pleasant. And, uh, I'm sorry, December eighth is our first wrestling duel versus Mount Pleasant as well.
Are they both here?
Those are the home games, yes. Yeah, I didn't tell you, the weigh games are a little bit before that.
So wrestling is on the eighth?
Yes, it's a home duel versus Mount Pleasant. And December ninth is Mount Pleasant home duel, that's, that's the first two.
Okay, and since we're on save the date kind of things here, um, we have noticed kind of a spike in, um, stressed-out teenagers at the high school. And so, um, as a result of that, we want to be proactive with our students and getting them, um, and their families ideas for resources that may be available for them. So December first, we are having a mental health awareness tonight. We've invited four different groups in, um, from counseling associates here in Keokuk, also therapy group counseling services from Burlington, as well as our school, as our school-based counselors that work with families first and young house services. Um, to come and speak on topics of anxiety, depression, self-imaging, and self-harm. And so just kind of making people aware of warning signs that they can look for in their teams as far as, you know, needing some good, better coping skills with all the stresses that they feel in these, in these times. Um, so at five o'clock, we will have the open to the public. The, um, and it will be in the, the library that day. We're looking for the speakers to speak about fifteen to twenty minutes and then we'll have a likely question and answer session afterwards for them. So, um, they will also be meeting with this middle school, high school staff after school that day on December first. So they'll be giving staff some ideas too of ways that they can help our students cope with some things.
Are you reaching out and inviting certain people to make sure they're there or...
Um, right now we're just doing an open to anyone who would like to come.
It's like a power announcement.
Yeah, we'll do a power announcement.
We've also had it on Facebook page as well.
Yeah, so...
But we're offering ideas if more students there.
Yeah, right.
I just, you know, usually the kids you want there aren't the ones that come and that's, you know, is a way to kind of openly...
Sure. And I know some of our teachers that, um, already work very closely with some students that feel the stresses of teenage, um...
So seeing individually holistically, talking to those teachers, that builds interest with those students, providing, providing a good idea as well.
Yeah.
So I have to kind of give a shout out to, um, Lindsay Figgy and Lindsay Wong, who she's our ADA school social worker. They've been working very closely with me on this project and so I really appreciate their help and insight, um, for that. Also, um, starting November twenty-eighth, our special education students at the high school have begun, got, begun a venture called Wide Awake Cafe. And so during our advisory time, they are going to be serving coffee, lattes, and tea to staff members. Um, this is helping them learn good working skills, financial literacy skills, and just overall, um, communication skills. So that's a pretty neat thing, I'm gonna be putting something on, um, the K-Pride Facebook page about that tomorrow. Uh, they've made a wonderful little website of their very own, so it's all of the junior and senior social education, um, students writing that for us, so, really good. Let's go.
Yeah, you're worried about...
Well, both of you. Oh, yes. Yeah, it is, it's, um, the fourth, I think, I meant to mention that. Senior citizens dinner, yes.
No, it's December thirteen, thirteen, isn't it?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, December, December nineteen. Sorry, thank you.
Thanks, I was asked by somebody.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you.
Kerry, too, Kerry, too?
Uh, special ed numbers, finalize that. We're up, uh, from last year, um, which is good as far as numbers are. Unfortunately, rather look at some additional pairs. So, we spent a lot of time at the middle school that and, uh, some high school time as well and GW, so we may be adding some more.
I think I saw a post in the room that was today.
To that, that would be one, we may just have some additional.
How many of those are we up?
From three twenty-nine to three fifty-seven.
Is that number of kids or is that the waiting?
Waiting.
Waitings are up, how about the number of kids, is that about the same or is it up just a little?
I don't have those numbers in my head, sorry, I'll have to look and let you know.
Other things I haven't dealt with are listed up here, so all Jared's got it.
Yeah. Okay, our instructional coaches are looking at the C-three train, the college career assistance just ready, ready train that they've been receiving. And wanting, just like we want our students to have instruction that's differentiated to them, we are going to be doing a little bit more of that for our C-three, our instructional strategists. And then our math cohort, we've found that we really need to drill more in and focus more into the math as, as the standards themselves and how this looks within our instruction. So Dave Christiansen with missing has, he offered and will be coming to Keokuk beginning second semester to meet with our C-three math cohort as a team. And it'll be one coach coming in from Mount, from actually, oh, up the road here, it's not Mount Pleasant. Or not.
For math.
For Madison, sorry. Fort Madison. Sorry, we're all over the stick this week. Coming in from Fort Madison to join our team of teachers, so I thought that was really neat. That they see the importance of this, Dave Christiansen agrees. One of the nicest comments he's made towards our participants, our Iowa course strategist was, of the groups of teachers that he has worked with over the years and within his work, he's just amazed and just couldn't say enough about their dedication and the level of questions and inquiry and the want of doing well and bringing this into the practice. So that was just a really nice compliment for our staff.
And to piggyback on that, he went out of his way to let us know that at the school board convention.
Oh, good, good. Good.
That's, that's nice to hear.
Yes, yes, and I, I have to say, every staff member that I've worked with, all my teachers and staff just have been, it's shown more than just like, okay, let's do this, of like, I want to do this well, and we want to do this well, so thank you. Along with that, with the five strategic statements that were presented by the board, last Wednesday, we worked as an administrative team to break into these and begin our action planning process. So part of that was putting those statements, one per poster, and looking at them individually. And first, we started off with our admin team members in teams with their instructional coaches, breaking down what it is we're doing in our buildings already. Every initiative, program, activity, all of it, putting it one per sticky and then saying, okay, where do these fit? And really going towards streamlining and ensuring that our work is aligned to these statements and standards, but also, also looking at planned abandonment, meaning if we are not doing something with fidelity and it is not having impact, desired outcomes for our students, we need to say, you know what, it's okay, say no. And set that aside and really bring our focus in. So there's two big things, I mean, lots of good work going throughout our district at all levels, but those are the two big elements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I've got, I've got something besides aspirin.
My nectar one day.
I won't take offense, but half the room left. No one wants to talk about my nectar. Okay, so let me just get this. I know, aren't I? I swear I showered. If you can see a little bit better. Okay, I do have to give a little slight disclaimer. We did have an adjustment to our certified enrollment that they actually finished at the end of last week, and I'm sorry, I didn't get this updated, but we're down to one kid. So instead of the nineteen fourteen seventy-seven, it's actually nineteen thirteen seventy-seven. But for the purposes of this, I'm going to continue with the numbers that are up here, because that's what it is, so it'll be off just a little bit. So we did certify our enrollment, like I said, nineteen thirteen point seven seven. And we are actually up from last year. Last year, our certified enrollment was nineteen eleven point five six. So we had increased to two point two one students. Over, if you look over the past five years, our enrollment has declined about eighty students. So it is, that is starting to slow down a little bit, because of course, if you looked last year, the last five years, it was in the nineties. So hopefully that, that will start to level off and go up, we'll be happy with that. So we used to be in the top ten percent of districts in terms of enrollment, and last year, we were actually forty-six out of three hundred and thirty-six districts. If you look at that, and of course, this year, we're forty-five out of three thirty-eight. Another thing to just kind of note, we do have an instructional support levy of ten percent. And if you look at our, our total property tax rate for the school, all funds, it's nineteen point three two three nine one, which is actually down from last year, of course, which we, everybody loves. In two thousand and sixteen, we had the fifth highest property tax rate of three hundred, there's three hundred and sixty rates. I know there's less schools than that, but district rates, there's three hundred and sixty, just because of the way some are split. And fiscal year seventeen, when you rank us, when you rank it from the high value to the low value, we are actually eighty-ninth out of three hundred and thirty-three districts in terms of property tax valuation. And when you look for fiscal year sixteen, when you rank it from high to low, we were actually three hundred and seventeen out of three hundred and thirty-three districts in terms of taxable property valuation per pupil, which means we're low. So when we tax per pupil, we don't bring in as much as, as somebody else, which is kind of a, our district is small compared to, geographically, it's small compared to other districts. So that presents a little bit of a challenge for us, so we just have to keep that in mind in terms of, you know, as we look forward to make decisions. Okay, so this is our enrollment trend from nineteen eighty-nine all the way projected to twenty twenty-one. The, let's see here, so when you look, we're, as you can see, we kind of, obviously, we've been falling down, but you can kind of see the past years, we're really kind of leveling off. And predicting, and the projections for going forward, we are predicting about a hundred and forty-five kindergarten class coming in. So with that, in terms of what's leading, it's going to be, hopefully going to level off and stay about the same.
Heidi, where'd you get the projections for nineteen twenty and twenty-one?
I just assumed, I assumed a one hundred and forty-five class coming in, and just graduated the rest of the classes that we have moving through the building. You'll see a little bit of a dev, of course, because we do have a few small classes moving through as well. I did find out actually in the DE website, I didn't know they had this, but they're, they actually have projections for what your enrollment will be for the next five years. The state actually has us at higher projections than what we are. For example, they predicted we would at, we would be at nineteen twenty-eight, and we're at nineteen thirteen. So they're off a little bit, but it, it at least was interesting, interesting. They predicted for, for fiscal year twenty-one that we would be nineteen fifty-nine, so they're predicting a little bit of an increase. So I would be extremely happy if that's right. Okay, so this slide makes me exceptionally happy. So this is our solvency ratio. If you look at our two thousand and sixteen revenues, we had twenty-two point four million. If you look at the expenditures, we had twenty-one point two million. The change in our assets and liabilities was a decrease of sixty-one thousand, which gave us a net change in our, our fund balance of one million seventy, one, one million and seventy-one thousand dollars. The ending fund balance for, and this is general fund that we're talking, the ending fund balance that we had for fiscal year sixteen was two point four million dollars, which is an increase, obviously, of one million, which is fantastic. Our solvency ratio last year was six point five, and if you kind of remember, and I know I've kind of talked to you before, on it that the state recommends your solvency ratio be between five percent and fifteen percent. So at that six percent, we were really kind of on the low end, and to be a little bit more financially sound, you really wanted to increase that. We did a fantastic job because we're at eleven percent now. So still, the, the state median is fifteen point three, so we are actually still a little bit low according to the state median. So it'd be nice to, to continue to keep that to about fifteen and then kind of maintain that, so, but it's, it's looking good, so. Okay, so this is our solvency ratio trend from two thousand and seven all the way projected to two thousand and nineteen. As you can see, it was, it was higher and it's kind of creeped down a little bit. But then we've, obviously, it's going back up. We started to increase a little bit in fifteen, and then we had a nice increase in sixteen. The projected for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, it's really based on a worst-case scenario, kind of average scenario, and a, and a best-case scenario. It all determines what, what's going to help that, of course, is what our allowable growth is going to be and, and as we move forward. So that's kind of where we're looking, but, you know, with their planning and everything, we'll obviously stay away from that worst-case scenario position, so.
And Heidi, besides the allowable growth, the TLC funds, does that affect that graphing?
Yeah, that would be general fund, so absolutely, the TLC funds that come in, yep, so.
Is that factored in there?
Everything.
The difference would be what you spend and not spend, so.
Correct. Okay, so, sorry. Okay, so this is our unspent balance. An unspent balance is always an interesting thing to try to explain, it's not our cash. It's basically like our credit, with the way they always describe it to us, it's like our credit card credit. So it's basically what we can spend above and beyond what authority we get. So two thousand and sixteen, our spending authority was twenty-one point five million dollars. We had expenditures of twenty-one point two million, and so actually, our unspent balance grew a little bit, by about two hundred thousand dollars. Our ending unspent balance is six point six million, and this is really the greatest, really the greatest indicator of good financial health. And we are very healthy with, with this unspent balance. It's harder to build cash back, or it means easier to build cash than it is to build your unspent balance. So you always want to make sure that you're keeping your expenses in check with revenues you're bringing in, which is going to be driven by, your certified enrollment is going to be the big player in that. But you want to make sure you keep those in check, because as your unspent balance goes, it's, it's really hard to build it back up. And you definitely want to keep yourself in check so that you're not overspending. Our, so they do, they do do a ratio with this, just like they do solvency ratio, and again, it has the same, the same targets, which is the five percent to the fifteen percent, not to be any greater than twenty-five percent, that's what the state has set. And our unspent balance is twenty-three point eight percent, so it's, it's definitely within the means and it's definitely very healthy. Okay, so this is just a graph to kind of give you an idea of where we've gone from our unspent balance. All the way, it looks like nineteen ninety-nine, and of course, then where we're projected with two thousand and nineteen. We were pretty low down in nineteen ninety-nine, obviously, we did some increases, and, and it got built back up, and we're really staying at a real healthy balance right now, and want to continue that. So another thing we like to look at, of course, our greatest expenditure is, is our people and the investment that we put in our people. So staff cost is a percent of what your total gen, general fund expenditures is. Currently, we are at eighty-two point two percent. The target is between seventy-five and eighty percent, so we're really right around the top edge of that target. We're exactly the same percent that we were last year, so this is really maintaining at, at an okay balance. Okay, so as we look on to next year, like I said, these numbers will change a little bit with the enrollment, but we'll go ahead and look at it as, as it is with the nineteen fourteen. We're, we're starting to project what we potentially will get for new money, and new money is going to be actually new money brought into the district. If you look, and this is assuming eighty percent allowable growth, which might be a little bit optimistic, but I'm going to be optimistic and hope that we get that, but we potentially, I have a sheet later, it'll kind of break it down into the different types of allowable growth from zero all the way to four. So if you look at what our certified enrollment is, the fiscal year eighteen regular program district cost will be about twelve point eight million. The fiscal year seventeen regular program cost for this year, we're actually twelve point five million. And that is taking out your, we have a budget guarantee this year, and of course, when they're figuring out your budget guarantee for next year, they, they take that out. So we did have a budget guarantee of about a hundred and eighty-five thousand, so that's already removed from there. So if you look and I follow kind of that through, if you look at actual new money into our district with a two percent allowable growth, it's only going to be eighty-eight thousand dollars, that's it. So we'll definitely have to, to look at expenditures and, and make sure we keep everything in check so that we can continue to, to stay financially healthy.
If we not have the budget guarantee, you'd add a hundred and eighty-five thousand more on the.
Correct, correct, yes, thank you, you bet. So, and like I said, we'll look at new money, but just kind of, since we're on this one, if, if allowable growth is zero, that will actually put us into a budget adjustment of a hundred and four, and then we'll actually have negative new money of fifty-nine thousand. So we'll actually have fifty-nine thousand dollars less than we do this year, so. And that is because we had such a, when you have a decrease in enrollment, and we had a decrease from last year to this year of about fifty-two kids, that takes about two years before it really hits your new money and your bottom line coming into your district, because of that budget guarantee.
Unless you keep declining.
Correct. Okay, so this is just kind of a projection looking out from two thousand and eighteen all the way to two thousand and twenty-one, just to kind of give you the look at where things will be if we continue to get a two percent allowable growth. I would love it to be consistent like that, but we're not for sure, it will be consistent like that. But as you can see, remaining, and even with a little bit of a decrease, if we decrease ten students to, to next year, you can kind of see really what, how the new money projections and what happens there. Okay, so just a few conclusions that we can draw, can kind of draw from this, is that, you know, the district is in good financial condition, but we need to make sure that we're moving forward conservatively and that we're looking at keeping those expenses in line, because we definitely don't want to get out of line and get into a bad situation. Student enrollment, of course, that's going to be our biggest contributing factor. So we will, it'll be interesting to see how this, how student enrollment plays out in the next few years. Of course, the state's financial position always is going to play a factor in this, and whether or not they're giving us allowable growth or, or, you know, what, what budget cuts might come our way, that's from up there. Of course, we need to look at how to continue sustaining additional expenditures for the staff in existing new programs, and make sure we keep all those expenditures in check. And then we will need to monitor the levels we want to maintain for our financial. And then we will need to monitor the levels we want to maintain for our financial targets. So, um, for example, like the solvency ratio, we want to make sure that that stays at a healthy balance. Um, and, you know, of course, the unspent balance, we want to make sure that those targets stay where we, where we want them to be so that we're not doing things like borrowing to, to, you know, cover our expenses for day-to-day, to day-to-day operations. Because that's not a good use of taxpayer money, so. Um, that's really all I've got with this, with the, um, presentation. Any questions before I kind of walk through the next couple of pieces?
Was there any, um, projections made when you went as the ISB, Congress, at the delegate assembly, or anything about the allowable growth?
Gary?
Nope.
Any, any ideas?
Any ideas discussed there?
No.
No, but I will say in Nance 301, they had the 2015 numbers, and Russ and I said, these aren't right.
Yeah, we said we were in shape for that, yes.
Good, good. They're just a year behind.
We knew our number on our table.
Good, I'm glad.
Well, no, we announced it to the world.
Yeah, we did.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, if there's no other questions, then, um, I'll kind of move on to the next sheet that kind of is in your packet. It's just the new money sheet that I was talking about with you. Um, it gives the, for the fiscal 17, eight, for fiscal year 18, of course, it's looking at if we get 0% allowable growth, 2%, 3%, and I know 4% is kind of out there, but we're, you know what, we'll, we'll look at it, and we, we, girl's got a dream, so, it's all right. Um, like I said, if you look at the 0%, um, that one, of course, is going to be the most concerning because that gives us the zero new money, um, and actually negative, negative about 60,000 dollars of, of, um, money that's going to be less into the district. So we'll kind of have to look at that. 2% gives us about 88,000 into the new, new money into the district, and, um, 3%, if that should happen, give us 214,000 dollars new money into the district. And then the only other thing that I kind of, and I just printed it, um, because it, it was new, um, for fiscal year, I think it is, for fiscal year 15, this is probably what maybe you might have seen in 301. It's just the, the seven general fund financial indicators. Um, ISB puts these out once they get all the information from the CAR, so of course fiscal year 16's not out yet. But these are just good, quick, um, charts and quick things to look at to kind of see where we're at. And then it gives you medians as opposed to where other districts are, where the state's at. Um, it's just, it's just a nice, um, quick financial overview, so. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Tim, do you have anything to add to Jerry's?
No, like I said, it was a good exercise. Got a lot of things to do right now, so we'll, we'll look at.
Great. Okay, now on to old business. Kim's going to talk to us about the after prom laser.
After prom, we'd like to do laser tag as one of the activities, and before we, I guess, proceed and put a down payment, we just want to make sure that it is okay with the board that we do that. I know the policy is they don't want look-alikes, gun look-alikes to come in to the district, to the schools, and so that was a concern that we had, and we just wanted to make sure that it was okay with the board to go ahead.
So I'll entertain a motion to fix that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Jason knows about all this, we talked about that in the last meeting, and he's okay with it.
I know, they were talking about clearing it with Adam, do you have a problem with it?
No.
Only if you get one.
No, Adam wants to use a paintball gun while you're using a laser.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, new business. Julie and say, oh, see him, oh, you don't look like that. To talk to us about the use of the gym?
Yes, uh, my name is Jessie Clark, I'm here representing KIKA Youth Voice Basketball, and we were wanting to put on our tournament January 28th and 29th, and we were looking to ask for permission to use the gym on that Sunday, January 29th.
What are we hard on, Tim?
Yeah, and for decades.
You only need it on Sunday, you don't need it on Saturday?
Yes, uh, I think that it's a, okay for Saturday, but we have to.
Oh, of course, because it's Sunday, you have employees get a special. And we've always approved that since you were a player there.
It's a time of the week.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept that they get to use the gym?
Second?
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you coordinate with the custodians and everything, just like normal?
Yes.
For them?
Yeah, Jason's well aware.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
The wheels are moving along, you get with it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's part of the game.
You won't make us feel bad, yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, insurance claim on the roof bids?
The, the page, I think that's the first one you ever got to do, wasn't it?
Yes.
Official.
Yes.
Way back, uh, we got a call from the adjuster saying we had no damage, other than some skylight, so I contacted a, a roof person that I've dealt with over the years, who came down and put together, um, about 16 page, uh, presentation, sent it off to the insurance company. Because of that, that's kind of where we're at with all this. We had some significant roof damage that's going to be replaced at the high school. Um, right now, we have what is called a Garland armor light. It's a white metal product that, um, is kind of expensive, but doesn't wear real well. So to move this process forward, we had to at least go out and get the bids to start the number, so we had a number to deal with. So I'm not asking you to do anything other than just look at this tonight. I'd like to set up a committee, and, and force you different types of roofs to look at. These are the numbers then that we can use potentially to re-roof the high school with that. You know, if you want to do the armor light back on, 72, you want to do a, like a build-up roof, cap sheet, 984 would be a little bit, so, um, it's just a starting point. Um, the base bid C, all the way on the right, is to put a new cap sheet on George Washington as part of the bid. So this is only for Garland's product. Um, we still have more roof people coming with additional numbers, such as the bus barn, etc., etc. So this is just a starting point of this. Um, just kind of want to let the board know where we're at with it right now, and then if you're okay, like I said, committee people have kind of looked at what we want to do and move forward. Obviously, I have Aaron involved now, and a couple of board members, that's.
But what about the building grounds committee, which we've talked about?
Yeah, that was up there, which we haven't informed yet, but we had heard at, uh, the board meeting that they, uh, the state board, thank you, that, um, they typically have a building and grounds committee, which, something like that would fall under. But, um, right toward the end, Tim, you said something about, uh, Garland, where are they at on here?
Uh, that's the people that bid, this is all Garland products. It's all Garland products, and because Garland's on there now, um, the insurance company paid us gold and get bids to see what kind of number we had to deal with.
Have the insurance company seen these bids yet?
Yes.
Are they finally coming around, to your way of thinking, or?
Not yet on the middle school.
Not yet on the middle school.
They're all still arguing, I guess.
Okay, so Garland is a general contractor?
No, Garland is a roof product. It's all Garland roof products.
And these are, they're different contractors that they work with through, okay.
Were they at the, were they at a booth at this station?
Yes.
Anyways, I have to stop here.
I stopped.
I stopped at other ones, like the solar, uh, uh, roof, this thing, and the interesting thing about that was they said you could even lease that, uh, or some contract, I don't know, you also stopped there?
No, I learned something about it.
Yeah, they did a certain, you know, chance yet, but it was just interesting information to see how the solar roofing.
So Garland is a product, a company and a product?
Yes.
And what do we have currently is Garland on how many of our roofs?
Right here, be it high school.
No, I mean, not what, oh, what we're bidding is because they already have it. And then are they taking care of the bidding for the other roofs in the district that? So they're only bidding their, their product, but we?
It's very specific, and they need a number, insurance company needed a number.
Okay, so are other roofs, if they're not Garland, like the middle school? Is that Garland?
No.
Okay, so you're getting a separate?
I'm not getting a bid with middle school yet because I don't think it's been there.
So when you're able to convince some of that, you'd get a separate bid on it, on a different product?
Yes.
Okay.
Different product.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, the recognition label pins, we have a little flyer here, and, um, I, I think this would be a great idea for like those people that came, that if we can give them something. So I guess you just have to look at the prices, we can buy 50, we can buy 100, we can buy 250, and obviously, we're already buying the cheaper they are for pin, but, so I'll entertain a motion from somebody on either.
Which, which one?
I don't care, anyone you want.
And this is something that we are committed to doing every working month.
I think this is very nice.
A while back, we got, uh, some, some different prices, and we didn't know another company in town even dealt with it, and I've been here a long time and didn't know, and then they were upset. Did we ask anybody else in KIKA? Or is there anybody else that does this?
I don't know. I, I don't know what Joe, Joe.
Joe's the one that did the legwork on it?
Uh-huh.
So I can answer the question.
Yeah, I mean.
I just didn't want to.
Cover all the local.
I don't know of anybody else that does a, a pin like that, but I just wanted to bring that to the attention because there was another one, and, and we overlooked somebody as far as getting a quote, but nobody knew. And, and so I'm just asking that question before we approve it.
It'd be a good idea to just make sure that we covered.
Well, we can make a motion to approve one if there's not any other bits out there, so we don't have to come back.
But if we, and I opened up a can of words, if we.
Buy 50 of this, and then the next time, we'll buy from someone else.
Yeah, because if we approve it, in case there's anybody else, they'll just look at the quote and turn it in for, uh.
Yeah.
True.
679.
Yeah, yeah, 670. So I would make a motion that we approve 50 at this time to get started.
I second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, me? Okay. High school minors and majors.
Yeah, uh, so our PBIS team, our wonderful team, you met earlier, uh, we've identified, uh, our minors at school. Uh, currently, we have a system in place, uh, where teachers, if they get three minors within that class period, they could become a major, and it becomes a write-up. Uh, what we found is that, um, students that are getting multiple minors are, are getting lost in the system, so, um, if you have a seven-class period day, if you've got a minor for seven teachers, essentially, you could have seven minors if not accounted, um, and in turn, really, you could have 14 within a semester, and, and nothing's done in that regard. So, uh, what we, what we've decided as a team, and what we'd like to present to you is, is that we have a system in place where we're checking students, uh, every week, and when minors are getting ramped up, we're, we're getting interventions in place. This is, uh, very similar and pretty much right in line with what the middle school did. Brad and I brought this to you last year. Uh, we brought it for our recovery room, our minors, and our tenants. Um, and we saw a great decrease in our data because we were giving those interventions that were needed. Uh, these are five, uh, five-step intervention that I, I sent to you in the email, um, that I have here, and basically, it's per office visit. It starts with just a 30-minute detention, it can turn into 60 minutes, uh, half-day ISS, a full-day ISS, and then obviously recommendations, um, to go to learning center, but it has to be very far out of hand for that to get to that point, but we want to have steps in place that we're calling parents. But right now, um, some students are getting up the radar, and I want my teachers to feel supported, um, in the classroom, and that we have followed through on our end, so. Uh, again, I did go with the middle school because I want it to be right in line, so when they come to the high school, it's the same thing, it's not different, okay? So it's the exact same thing, it's five offices, and the changes. Well, part of PBIS is that you have a fresh start every semester, so we would look to have a fresh start every semester with our students as well, and restart that process. So, uh, I'm asking for a board amendment for our handbook, right in line with the amendment I, I gave you. Uh, no, no change, uh, with what the middle school's doing currently. Any questions?
No, I, I think it's a great thing because I, I have heard teachers talking about it, and they, they want this, so. I, I appreciate your support.
Well, we like to have an open door and, and get that feedback, and, and always look at changing our system, so to better support our teachers, obviously, definitely, so.
Yeah, and thanks for the big picture of coordinating with the middle school so that it goes, the students and parents go from one right to the other.
Absolutely, yeah, I think it's important to be aligned with exactly what they're doing, and, and sort of our attendance is as well, um, it's, it's, it's in line with that as well, so, yep.
Aye.
And we'll, we'll communicate that.
I'll move.
Sorry.
That's all right. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, Brad, you want to talk to us now, so then you can go?
And me, if you want.
My hat's got a referee, and I can, yep.
Aye, that's fine.
I don't need to go, though, I'd like to see you. Um, we're having a recognition assembly tomorrow. Our trimester one came to an end last Wednesday, so we're doing our Student Appreciation Day activities tomorrow. So you're all welcome to come by and, and see, um, all the kids that are being recognized for perfect attendance, 4.0, um, no majors and minors, and then there'll be a dodgeball competition after that for the students who had the incentives that were laid out for the last month. If they had no, uh, I think three or less majors or minors over the last month, then they earned the incentive to play in a dodgeball tournament. Um, that'll be fun tomorrow. Heidi's also.
Do you have a staff team on the dodgeball?
No, we don't. Well, because of workers' comp claims, we.
Oh. Don't you guys have a basketball team you play?
We used to, but we did, we, we did other activities because of our, we were, we were told by our workers' comp rep that we needed to calm them down.
Hi.
No dunkings, no.
We'll, we'll have a conversation with Heidi.
What time does that?
Wow.
1:45?
That's when that'll start.
1:45?
1:45, yes.
Kids would love that.
Um, and we also, the Heidys, uh, gonna, uh, they're donating 500 dollars from the Milka Difference Program that we ran in, in, um, the month of October, so they, we raised 500 dollars through them, and they're going to present us with a check tomorrow as well. Um, so that'll happen at that assembly as well. We also are doing our, our backpack program, which I'm sure you've heard a lot about. Uh, we still have donations coming in from that, Walmart's donated, a lot of local businesses that have donated, that's going really, really well. Uh, a lot of kids are benefiting from that, anywhere from 25 to 32 kids every week, um, and then on long weekends and over the holidays, they'll get a little bit more, so they're getting, um, food, food items that are non-perishable in a, in a backpack anonymously. They're back in their locker, so it's not like we're doing a big presentation to them, but they get that every weekend. And Quinn and Kelsey, Quinn, Rule, our nurse, and Kelsey Ware, are kind of fabulous down with that. What else? I had something else I was going to say, and I forgot it. Any questions? Anything you've heard that we're doing?
Just good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really, but our, our data is not quite as good at this point as it was last year. We're looking at referrals, so that's something I'll address tomorrow, some of the hotspots that, um, our PBIS program, and that's really the point in, in gathering the data on majors and minors so that we can reteach those things and, and hit those areas so that we're, um, meeting the respective responsible ready areas. I think that's it, if I think of anything else, I'll email you updates.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, 2017, 18, SBRC requests for allowable growth for open enrollment out.
Okay, yes, um, this is something we actually do every year, and we get to do a new thing, um, that we haven't, or that I've not seen done, and I asked, I asked Greg, and he wasn't for sure he'd seen done either. Um, we, there's two things that we go to the SBRC for, to ask for spending authority. This is not the cash, this is just the spending authority, and, um, really, there's no reason why you don't want to ask for the authority. So the first one is the approval, and we do have to separate them, so I do need two different motions, uh, but the first one would be the approval of the allowable growth for open enrollment out, and the. out in the amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars, six hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. That's basically for kids that were not on our count last year, but were on our count this year that are open enrolled out. We will get bills for them. So we need the authority basically to spend the money because we're going to have to pay for them this, this time. So I need a motion, or I'm asking the board to make a motion to approve this one.
Can entertain a motion to allow this?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. The second one that we're looking at is for the increased enrollment. Because we did go up by two, we do get to ask for funding for fifteen thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty cents, not funding, sorry, just the authority. This is not the cash, just the spending authority. Because these are students that, of course, weren't on our count last year, but are here this year. And so will be, obviously be spending. So we get to have a little bit additional authority. So I'm asking the board if they will approve this one as well.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. I'll just keep, I'll just keep going because I'm the next one. All right. So the next item is the two thousand seventeen eighteen SBRC request for additional allowable growth for the at-risk educational programs. This is something that we will put on our Aiden Levy. We, we do ask, if you, let's see here, let me get to the sheet. If you look, there's actually the memo and then there's the budget. This budget actually funds our at-risk programs. So that would be the alternative school. That would be the student service coordinators that assist the students that are at risk. And really just funds that. So I know it's a vital, a vital piece of our budget. And also, you know, those kiddos, we definitely want to support them in any way that we can. So I am asking that the board approve in the amount not to exceed six hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That would be our portion. The total budget, if you look at the budget, it's of course eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. But once you take in carryover from last year and also our twenty-five percent match, because it is required that we do twenty-five percent match, the six hundred and nine thousand is what I'm asking for, for additional funds. So.
So entertain a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is me, early retirement incentive. And we were just asked about this last year. We waited until December, January, February to make a decision. And so I'd like us to discuss that and see what we want to do with that. And I also had a question from a teacher asking me about paying for days. And I don't know the contract well enough to know if that, before you get paid your non-sick days-
That's part of the incentive. That's part of the retirement incentive.
Yes, not part of the regular, okay.
Correct.
Do we make any statement most yet? Well, we waited late and then we offered it. And we did say we weren't going to offer it.
We said we could look at the numbers and let the numbers dictate what we were going to do. So-
And the numbers are good.
And rolling up, I would say there's not a need for it financially.
I haven't dived into the numbers quite yet and looked specifically. But right now, with the numbers where they're at, it's not a huge decrease. So I'm not anticipating at this time. But like I said, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I haven't delved into the numbers and I don't know allowable growth. So.
So it's reinforcing what we already said last year?
Right.
That we weren't planning on having it unless it was something that-
I just don't want teachers to come in January and February and asking us, oh, can we have this?
Right.
I think we need to make a decision now and then-
So I'll entertain a motion.
Yes. I say aye. So moved that we don't have an early retirement package.
Okay. Can I have your second?
Go ahead.
Nobody wants a second pass?
I think we should have Heidi.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask.
It's going to hit three hundred plus thousand dollar issues a week. So we're three for three point one percent. You get eighty-eight thousand dollars. It's got to be in that ballpark. So we got to cut three hundred thousand dollars potentially on the budget.
I mean, that's probably a ballpark figure.
It doesn't hurt to, to reinforce what we've already said.
Sure.
But yet, by the time we get to that point, things change. And what I was going to joke with you about was if we approved this now, that just guarantees no teacher will come back to us in January, February, or March and ever ask and stand up and read all the reasons why.
Oh, I understood, yeah.
Done deal, isn't it?
But I thought that was just, a lot of people asking. It's like, we can't make this a personal decision. We need to make this a business decision. So that's the only reason why.
And we put that down as a business decision on our thing last year, but unless some-
And Roma's rough, her deep, her out, up.
Yeah. Or, or maintained, we didn't drop. So.
So what's our decision? Can we get a second on that motion or?
Doesn't, doesn't appear.
No. So I guess then are we, we're just going to continue to discuss it, I guess.
Well, I thought we were going to get numbers from her and then we can entertain it again next month.
That's something that the finance committee couldn't look at.
Oh, we already discussed Thursday or Friday.
We'll start looking at budget numbers pretty soon and that'll be in the finance committee.
Make a decision by next month.
I don't know that we'll have a decision by next month, but-
I think the final decision should be made by the board. We will look into it as the finance committee.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I think the final decision should come from our board.
What is the timeframe, see whether, that's the problem. Yeah, so Gary's made a motion now, which nobody's second. I think because they're sitting back saying, well, maybe we just don't have a little more time to discuss and see. But I don't want it to go on too long.
But we could, I would reinforce and, and through the board notes in the paper that we put it in last year. We were not planning on having one. And one of the things that would influence that were the numbers. If they were to drop forty or fifty kids, we had definitely entertained that idea. Well, we've gotten part of that picture. And that is, we did not have a decrease. So that's, as far as anybody planning, I mean, they should have gone off of our information last year. And if they see that our numbers are the same, then that means that as of right now, we wouldn't be doing that.
Even though there's not a second to this motion, I would say from our discussion here, it certainly appears it isn't likely.
It, it isn't likely or highly unlikely. But yeah, we can come back in January if we're-
But you're, you're, what you're saying there, Russ, is you actually had more new money last year than you did this year. And you're down fifty kids. New money last year is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This year's going to be eighty-eight.
If we get the two percent.
If you get two percent.
Well, I bet we don't, before talking up here-
I'm taking one to zero.
Well, yes, I talked to representatives in the Iowa Department of Education, from other people, people associated with Iowa School Board Association, there, there is pessimism. There's not any optimism. And it says, you know, to, you know, we'd be lucky if, well, it could be zero, could be a half.
Right.
It's not, I don't think it's going to be-
But I think that's likely to be two, from talking with people.
Well, I don't think it's going to be two. Do you think it's going to be two?
Yeah. Out of Heidi's proposal, zero, two, three and four.
Three.
I'm picking two. What are you picking? Tonight, right now, what are you picking?
I think it's going to be one.
One?
I don't, I don't think it's going to be two.
I don't think it's going to be two.
With this new legislature, I don't think-
Anyhow, our fifty kids last year was our biggest hit over new money last year or this year.
No, but my, my point is, you know, last year, you, you were down fifty kids and you had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in money. This year, you're down, you're up kids and you're going to have less in money.
But the down fifty kids was more than the difference between the new money last year and this year.
But that does take two years also to hit us because of the budget guarantee.
Because that would be three hundred thousand.
Because of the budget guarantee. Mm-hmm. Yep. That's why this year, if we get zero, we'll have negative in money. So.
Okay, so, so you want to wait till June or July? Is that when they tell us the new money?
Isn't it supposed to be in January?
We should have it already, that allowable growth. We should have, they should have already set it for next year.
Right.
But this is also why this decision doesn't happen just that quick. Because A, you just got enrollment done. B, we don't know what the legislators are going to do.
Well, you don't have legal.
Yeah, they are basically leaving.
That's why, I mean, I understand you want to get out there in front of it and say, you know, we are, we are. But this is one of the reasons why the board struggles sometimes with this kind of stuff, because you throw out misinformation.
Sure.
All right, we will continue to gather information.
So for anybody asking now, it would be the same as, as was printed last year.
But you get on.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Correct.
All right.
Kuno's settlement.
We, there was five school districts that went together and basically sued curriculum law. And we have a settlement. That settlement is to one million and fifty thousand dollars, of which we get thirty-two point five percent, which is roughly about three hundred and forty thousand dollars back. We have some expenses involved with the litigation. I think we have, I'm thinking eighteen-ish maybe.
Probably, we're about fifteen right now. We have the final bill yet.
So we're thinking about eighteen. So we're very hopeful we'll have, you know, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that initial Kuno's investment a few years ago back.
Good. What were the five schools, Tim? You've told us-
It was obviously us, it was West Burlington, Bedduren, Albia, and Panora. Four of the five.
I want to thank-
Thank you. I thank everybody.
I think I want to thank that we got, but I want to thank Gary for, yeah, for urging us to go, instead of going, how was it, hourly rather than-
Versus contingent.
For contingent. And we, we debated that for quite some time.
Was that the night that he was on the phone in Vegas and said, go for it all?
Yeah.
It was, wasn't it?
And we, even more cautious efforts of our group, decided to cast our lock with your suggestion. And it proved to be a good one.
Yeah, and thank Tim and Heidi's work for what, and the others that gave depositions and Brent. Thank everybody for that.
Yeah.
Thirty-five or forty percent, I can't remember what the contingent-
Do you remember what the contingent zero was?
After, after October one, it went to thirty-three and third.
Oh, maybe that's-
And if it went beyond that, then it was a four.
Okay.
I'd like to also thank Jane Abel for, you took the initial step also to bring this, uh, by talking about that-
Oh, I get, I get asked for, for a survey.
Survey.
How they were functioning.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept this settlement.
Second.
Second.
I think you're, yeah.
Seconds.
All, any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Should have, should have our money within the next probably three weeks.
Great.
So a quick turn back around.
That's good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I can give the board numbers a raise.
Motion passes.
That's the money for venues.
Okay, on the personnel, we have a list of personnel. And after you read through it, I'll entertain a motion to accept it.
We had, given very many applicants for our sub. Of course, some of them were parked one hour, two hours.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to accept.
The new seventh grade person, that's not a camper, I mean, that's a-
It's a transfer.
That was my concern.
Oh, I just want to just put that status was, when someone, you know, leaves in the year, then if a person brought in a long-time sub or this is a transfer person. Well, was this person, wasn't this person a new teacher initially?
Mm-hmm.
And transferred from where?
Fifth grade.
From fifth grade to seventh grade now. Okay.
So what happens to that position? Are we going to post for that one?
Okay, well, the, the recommendation will come from the interview to, to offer this individual.
See if a elementary position, maybe a-
I know, in the middle of the year, it's hard.
We didn't used to, to do that. What's the logic or reasoning to do that now? We used to go with long-term subs and we'd fill those over, over the summer.
It doesn't mean we won't. We don't get somebody that we think would be a very fit and we won't put along with the subject. We just shouldn't speak. Mr. McCloskey, we felt this person was a really good fit to move into the middle school.
Didn't she used to teach math, middle school math somewhere?
And there was a lot of conversation between Nicole and myself before this happened to make sure that we did the book with record of both buildings and-
And Nicole's okay with it?
Yes. Yeah.
That's my concern.
Yeah, those conversations happen.
So that position will be posted then?
Posted, certainly.
But when it, when it is, then you still have the option whether you want to select someone or not. I think we'll go with the long-term sub.
Yeah, we'll put an advertisement out. Maybe we can make your grad really good person.
But we have options. Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Could I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the list as presented?
I would second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now.
I'm assuming that that will take place at the semester?
That's got on their K- number.
Okay.
One, aye.
Can I take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I thought you were going to be right on there.